Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our second meeting in July. Thank you for joining us. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 15, 2022, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
President Vartan?
Present. All right, and thank you. We're moving on to the pledge of allegiance, and I will ask the Gould family to lead us in the pledge. It's over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notes regarding closed session and hearings and comments.
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're on to approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the regular enclosed session meeting minutes of the July 5, 2023 council meeting?
So moved.
And we have a second?
Second.
All right, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, minutes are approved.
Council President, I abstain, I was not here. Sorry.
Oh, all right. Well, that's right. Okay, on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening, everyone, welcome. At the end of the last year, we started to raise awareness for our Summit Police Department Officer Karen Stensrum Sowers, who was in need of a kidney transplant. Officer Sowers was diagnosed with polycystic kidney disease at age 24 and now needs a living kidney donor to survive. I am so thankful for the opportunity and the outpouring of so much support that we have seen from many community members that have been getting screened, but so far, a potential match has not been found. Please visit the City of Summit website to learn more about Officer Sowers and the process of kidney donation. Her situation is such that she needs a living kidney, not one from someone who has passed. This week is the first week of Summit Police Department's Summit Youth Academy. I have been very blessed. One of the best things of being mayor is my office is up there, they're mostly down here, they're in and out. It's two one-week sessions. These kids, it's amazing to watch them from the beginning until the end, and how much they enjoy, learn, and change. So I'm very blessed. But anyway, each group of cadets participate for one week, learning about the role of police in our community, doing physical challenges and having a lot of fun. It was a pleasure to meet some of the young cadets and see them in action. This Friday is graduation, and I always enjoy attending, along with Council President Vartan, who was once a youth academy cadet himself. Next week...
First class.
Next week, the SPD will welcome a new batch of cadets for the second and final week. The SPD is posting photos on its Facebook, Instagram pages if you're interested in seeing them. The kids are just adorable. Yesterday, they were marching like this all over the place. Crazy. Even better today. And I have to say, I'm sorry, I'm going to take a little bit of a moment here. One of the things that they were doing outside in the atrium was a marching thing. So, left, right, right, half-right, half-left, vouchsafe, blah, blah, blah. And if they didn't do what they were supposed to do, they were supposed to, like, move out of the way and just move, like, self-select that they were not doing the right thing. There were 30 children, and these are seventh and eighth graders. They all self-selected. Yeah, I made a mistake. I moved. Nobody had to go, hey, you, go, you made a mistake. And it was really fascinating to watch these children who were serious enough and aware enough that they were self-selecting and making a decision, oh, yep, I was wrong here, and moved. So, anyway, and they were smiling and having fun and cheering on all the other kids. So, anyway, there's a lot of wonderful things that I have had great pleasure of being mayor, but certainly opportunities to be with children has been a highlight. So, anyway, if you know anyone who thinks they want to be at the youth academy next year, tell them it's a great experience. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want the chief to do?
Yes.
Excellent.
Chief, sorry, at the end of my, could you come up? We've had, you know, conversations about various and sundry.
We're going to have the chief do a presentation on crime.
Correct.
Yes, please, yes, please, yes.
Good evening. Through you, Council President, I have prepared a report summarizing the crime activity in the City of Summit for the first half of 2023. This report contains, like I said, the first six months. I also put as a comparison the first six months of the previous two years to show any decreases or increases in activity. Overall, I believe that you can find this report pretty encouraging. We've made a lot of progress over the last year or so. Again, the report is encouraging, and that's even in spite of the increased activity that we experienced during that two- or three-week period in June, that criminal activity that we experienced. Okay, the first statistic I want to go over is the overall crime index. That's all crime combined. As you can see, in 2023, the first six months, we have a total of 106 crimes. That's a decrease from 2022, where we had 122 crimes at the same time. It's not a big decrease, but it's in that area, 12%, 13% decrease in that activity. This is property crime. Property crime is a combination. It consists of wall thefts, or motor vehicle thefts, or burglaries. As you can see, to the far right, in 2023, for the first six months, we have a total of 72 property crimes, and this is a decrease from 2022 at the same time, where we had 99. That's actually a 27% or so decrease. Motor vehicle theft, this is the hot topic. This is, you know, something that we've been experiencing a problem with for going on two and a half years now. But as you can see, we made significant strides here. The first six months of 2023, we have a total of eight stolen vehicles. At this time, last year, we had 16. So we're showing a 50% decrease in motor vehicle theft. This is evidence that the methods that we've been using to combat the motor vehicle theft have been working. Specifically, we talked about this a couple times at previous meetings, the Summit Police Department, we put forward a two-pronged approach to combat the motor vehicle theft. First was an aggressive community outreach campaign, where we got the community on board to be a little more vigilant and to take common sense, crime prevention steps. And secondly, was an aggressive and proactive policing strategy. Now, this is, again, very encouraging, but we still have a long way to go. You know, we are still experiencing a lot of activity in residential areas with car thefts, I mean, attempts to steal cars. We've, that has gone down significantly as well. I think we're about down 40% on the attempts on cars, but they're, these car thieves are still active in our residential areas and in surrounding towns. But again, that number is an encouraging number. Where we saw an increase is in burglaries. As you can see on the far right, we have a total of 14 burglaries reported in 2023. That's an increase of four burglaries from the same time last year in 2022. Out of the 14, eight of them, six of them were unsuccessful attempts to enter a dwelling, and the other 10 were successful. Now, any increase in crime, you know, is a concern, a cause for concern. But with the burglary, you know, we're going to keep an eye on that number. It's only an increase by four, but historically, we've experienced this type of trend before. Burglaries, as I've said on a number of occasions, historically happened in this town in clusters, specifically because they're done by small groups of people. They'll come in, they'll hit a certain area, and then they'll leave for a little while. So we'll keep an eye on that. But one particular area of concern with the burglaries was that we experienced an incident where one group of, a particular group of car thieves, they upped the ante, they escalated a little bit, where most of the time, almost all the time, burglars, they prefer choosing their targets that are unoccupied for obvious reasons. This particular group, as you're all aware, we talked about it at two meetings ago, they escalated where they couldn't get into a car. They broke into a residence on Sherman Avenue during the night, when the residents were home, and they stole the key fob. home, and they stole the key fobs to the two vehicles and stole the two vehicles in the driveway. As we discussed at that meeting, you know, this type of crime, it's still rare, it's against the norm, but it does occur, and it's something that we have to, you know, that we're watching very carefully. As I explained, you know, at the previous meeting, when a crime like this occurs, it changes the whole dynamic of an investigation. We pretty much do a full-court press with the cooperation of other law enforcement agencies. And in the particular case of the Sherman Avenue burglary, we were able to quickly identify a suspect, you know, within a couple of days, and then in cooperation with the New Jersey State Police Stolen Car Task Force and United States Marshals, we're able to make an arrest of the individual responsible for that burglary. And then also too, with the increase of burglaries, the Summit Police Department, we've been using the same method to combat it as we use it for the stolen cars, because they're all happening in the residential areas, and it has been proven to be effective, that method. Larceny is just basically theft, that, as you can see, that's significantly down as well. If you look at the far right, we had 50 total in the first six months of this year, as opposed to 73 total last year. That's somewhere in like a 30% or so decrease. I just wanted to, again, to report to all of you that the Summit Police Department, we're going to continue to make residential area crimes an agency-wide priority. Basically, the stolen car thefts and the burglaries. Most of these burglaries are residential burglaries. Out of the 14, I think maybe only a handful are commercial. So it's an agency-wide priority, because these are happening in residential areas. We're going to continue to deploy three additional officers to the overnight patrols. These officers are tasked specifically with conducting residential patrols in targeted residential areas. We'll continue with our aggressive approach with our high visibility preventive patrols. We'll also continue with our covert undercover surveillance and decoy operations. Our detectives will continue their thorough follow-up investigations, which they've been doing all year. These investigations often lead them out of town to Essex County, to the towns where a lot of these cars that are stolen and property that are stolen through a burglary are either fenced or sold. We'll continue our intelligence gathering and our cooperation with our law enforcement partners. Also too, we have been upgrading our technology that is also helping us in this endeavor. In the beginning of, around the middle of June, our patrol fleet, we upgraded our camera systems that are in the patrol fleet. With that upgrade, license plate readers were added to all the patrol vehicles. So that's been very helpful to us. Also too, as you're aware, we have the Capital Project, the first phase of that will be starting this year, where we'll be adding LPRs to nine different locations in the city. And then the following year, the other nine locations, LPRs will be added as well. Also too, the four locations that we have right now, where we have LPRs, we are upgrading the systems at those locations. And then lastly, we'll continue our communication with the public, keeping them informed through Nixal Alerts, social media posts, keeping them aware of any trends in criminal activity. The strategy has been proven to be effective. 2023 to date, so the first six months, we have had 18 arrests of suspected car thieves, eight of them were adults, 11 juveniles. We've had four arrests, made four arrests for suspected burglars. On 19 separate occasions, our patrols in residential areas intercepted and chased out of town suspected car thieves. In conclusion, I'll just ask the community to remain vigilant, to report suspicious activity, to basically just look out after your neighbor, look out after each other. And as I mentioned that a few meetings ago, I know with some of these crimes, especially in residential areas, it causes a great deal of stress and anxiety. You know, it makes us feel vulnerable. But I just want to reassure the community that the Summit Police Department, these are a dedicated and tenacious group of individuals, and they're committed to, you know, keeping the community safe and safeguarding their property. Thank you.
Thank you.
In short, just trust your police department. We have this. Trust us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on, we have Administrator Baldwin. For your report, please.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, everyone. Milling and paving operations on Park Avenue are scheduled to begin the week of July 24. Currently, crews are preparing the roadway and making repairs to the storm and sanitary source. The Summit Free Market will be open this coming Friday, July 21, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the transfer station located at 40 New Providence Avenue. Stop by and drop off any unwanted yard sale quality items and browse other donated items. It is all free. Residents must have a permit to access the transfer station to attend. These permits can be purchased online through the City of Summit Parking Services Agency at cityofsummit.org/parking. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. On to mine, three things. First, my thanks to Chief Zagorski for his presentation outlining where we are with crime stats at this midway point in the year. Thanks to the brave women and men of the department for their work to keep us safe and informed. Thanks to my colleagues here on council for investing in the tools the police need to do their job and their diligence in exploring other policy options and advocacy at the state level. Thanks also to the community for your participation and support, especially when it comes to securing homes and vehicles. Second, the paid college internship program has concluded. The city benefited greatly by tapping into the talent of these young professionals in several ways, including the creation of the Hometown Heroes Interactive Map by Anna Estupinan, who also worked on improving fleet management, streamlining the new hire orientation process done by our HR intern, Hope Bazeman, the creation of communications materials, including scripts, calendars, speeches, and videos by Carter Frye and Kate Carafin in the Communications Office, and then data conversion and fieldwork by Alexander Hotman in the Tax Assessor's Office. My understanding is that some of these folks are sticking around to continue their work through the rest of the summer. I'm thankful for them, to Rosie Licatise, Tim O'Connor, Gin Blades, Amy Cairns, and Megan Trindell, who managed them individually, and to Megan Champney, who oversaw the program. Third, and finally, I will update again on Broad Street West. The relationship with the developers has ended, and it is the consensus of council that, one, we are not interested in developing any of the Broad Street West property under the current 2019 redevelopment plan. Second, we will entertain an ordinance repealing the plan to be introduced in September. And that concludes my report. So I'm here all week. Thank you.
Can I just add that the interns, I think that's really cool. These five students were amazing, and the things that they did were things that those of us who were trying to run the city, like, we said, how can we do this? And they went, yeah, sure. Boom, done. So it was really wonderful, and it was really, really great to have paid interns for the first time. So I'm very.
I agree. All right. Thank you. We're moving on. We're already at resolution. So we've got our first out of capital projects and community services. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10172 authorizes the naming of the soon-to-be-completed Dog Park II, the Gould Dog Park. Of note, the resolution reads, "The Matt Gould Dog Park," but we plan to change it to the Gould Dog Park. Councilwoman Gould served with distinction during 2018 and 2019, during which time, creation of a permanent dog park was one of his top priorities. Matt was a lover of animals and advocated for their protection and care. He believed in the power of government to bring neighbors together, and now he will do just that through this new dog park, which we are proud to name in his honor. I move to adopt this resolution.
And I enthusiastically second it.
Thank you. I will just start by saying, I think the longer I spend on council without Matt, the more I appreciate his style and his approach and his passion, and the more I miss him. Matt was a man whose service to this community was rooted so deeply in love, love for the planet and the living environment that we occupy, love for the city and the belief that government can do good, love for the people, for family, for pets, and for the sense of the community that truly makes this summit such a wonderful place. Serving on council was such an inspiration and such a pleasure with Matt, because the baseline was love, that the city is already amazing, and that with even more love, it could be even better. Matt was full of ideas, and he spoke about them with a sense of such authenticity and enthusiasm that the process of government felt centered, driven, and even a little bit fun. Some of those ideas were slightly infeasible and possibly quite expensive, things like creating a parking garage underground or using pickle.
Under the village green.
Under the village green, or using pickle and beet juice to brine the roads. But other ideas were quite practical and have helped to advance our city, things like the aggressive planting of 1,000 trees in four years, advancing public art, and of course, the idea to create a permanent dog park. These initiatives and others were advanced by Councilwoman Stephanie Gould, who was appointed to fill the seat until the special election as well. So it's my honor and pleasure to support this resolution tonight, to honor the Gould family, to advance this wonderful initiative for the community, and I recommit myself to do the best that I can to lead in a way that I hope makes Matt and his family proud. So thank you. Any other comments from members of council?
I think it's hard to follow that up.
I just want to come out and give you a hug.
But you want to vote first, and then we'll do.
Oh, wait, comments from the public.
Yeah, we need comments from the public. Let's vote, and then let's do hugs.
All right.
Okay. Do we have comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. So that motion carries, and we're on to the second resolution under capital projects and community services. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10483 awards a bid to Beach Electric Company Incorporated to perform a major overhaul of the electrical and operating components of the city's sanitary sewer pumping station. The pump has not been overhauled since its original construction, and parts are becoming increased, and the parts to repair it when it needs to repair are becoming increasingly hard to obtain. I move to adopt this resolution.
That's quite a step down from the last resolution in terms of the excitement that we feel, but it's an important one, so I second.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. And on to capital project number three. Councilmember Levine.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10356 awards a bid to S&amp;L Contractors LLC to perform the Oak Knoll Road Improvement Project. The project will include inspection and repair of storm and sanitary sewers, installation of granite block curb where none exists currently, and repair to the existing granite block curb in areas of disrepair. It also includes the milling and paving of the entire length of Oak Knoll Road. The project most likely will take place in September and October of this year. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Any comments, members of council?
Through you, Council President. For, I guess, for Director Schreger, I just have some questions around the timing of that, of that resolution. I know we run into paving issues with the asphalt plans closing. Is there, how tight is that timeline? If we get close to November and the temperatures start dropping, or?
Certainly. Through you, Council President. What they would start is the sanitary and storm sewer work and the curbing. If the weather cooperates, they will pave this year. If not, it will be like other projects where we will shut down for the winter and unfortunately not do it. That said, depending on the contractor's availability, if he's not going to start till late fall, we might just push it all to spring, but we'd rather at least get the curbing and the pipe work done. So it's a little bit aggressive. I hope it stays warm through November and we could finish, but we'll see.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments, members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. On to number four. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10529 serves to adopt this year's annual shared services agreement with Union County detailing the new community development block grant awards for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. As part of that award, the city is scheduled to receive the following: $50,000 for the Summit Housing Authority for security upgrades, $8,000 for wellness services at Summit Warm Hearts, $8,000 for Grace, $5,000 for the Summit Youth Center, and $5,000 for Summit Senior Citizens Social Services Transportation Program. In order to receive these funds, we must pass this resolution. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. And last one, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10532 authorizes execution of a 2023 greening Union County grant application. This grant is a matching grant where the county of Union will match tree for tree, including supply and planting for the 2024 planting cycle. The city has applied for and participated in this grant initiative for the past several years, and it has been seen as beneficial to our tree planting program overall. I move to adopt this resolution.
And I second.
Okay. I think this is our 28th year as a tree city, which is separate, but still important. Any other comments, members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On to community programs and parking services. Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. So this is resolution 10537, my first one, right? Okay. This is a resolution which will authorize the Summit High School 12th Man Incorporated 501(c)(3) organization to financially enhance the Summit High School football program. This year, the organization is requesting internet connectivity at Investors Bank Field. Although the organization has been created to help the Summit High School football program, this request will enable all high school and youth sports that use that facility the capability to livestream their games, practices, et cetera. The 12th Man organization will incur all of the costs associated with this, including any setup fees and the monthly service fee. This has been discussed in the Community Programs and Parking Services Committee, and all are in favor. I recommend we support this initiative with a formal written agreement between the city and the 12th Man, stating they will incur initial and future costs. I'd like to thank our resident Guy Hasselman for his leadership in this, and I would say for those of you who aren't familiar with Huddle, or if your kids don't play sports, one of the great things is that the kids will actually be able to video all of their sports activities, send them to coaches, or look for ways that they can improve their sports game. So I think this is a great opportunity, and thank you. I move to adopt this resolution.
Nice second.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Lisa, and then Jamie? Somebody.
It just seems like everyone wins with this initiative, and I think it's a great idea. And Mr. Hasselman, you answered any question I had in your very descriptive sort of plan that was written, so I appreciate your good work that went into that. So, and nice job in your committee, Councilmember Hamlet. I think this is a great plan. Thank you.
Wish I could take some of the credit, but I have to look at somebody in the audience for that one. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I have a question. So this whole, is it set in the, where is it located?
So what we're doing, right, so we can have Mark probably answer the question, but my understanding is that what we're doing the question, but my understanding is that what we're doing is we're going to have Verizon come out and do a plan of the area to determine how they can hardwire a connection for Ethernet, and then a camera will be able to be connected at Tatlock. There's more detail, if there's more detail, though, I'll let you, I'll let you handle.
So I'm curious, because I know there's-
But if you're going to chat, come on up.
I know there's conversation about changing the whole fieldhouse.
So, if you-
Come on up, come on up, though, because people can't, people can't hear you at home.
Why don't we do this? Why don't council finish your, their comments, and I'll come up and I'll give the detail, which I think-
Well, I'd rather you answer me now.
You're here now, so you want to just give your-
Did you want to, I know Councilwoman Allen wanted, looked like you wanted to say something first.
But I, I-
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Can you just give your, Guy, can you just give your name and address for the-
I'll give my name and I'll address. I'll answer the question, then I'll let you guys finish, and then I'd like to come back and say a few more things, so to answer-
You're always welcome back.
Thank you. To answer the question, Verizon needs to go in, and what they have now is very spotty Wi-Fi service. And really, what we need to stream it, the accurate, oh, sorry, Guy Hazelman, Ruthven Place Summit, sorry about that. And what we need is actually a hard wire. We need an Ethernet cable to be plugged in to a camera. The cameras are about this big, and they will be mounted on the press box, so it's-
So it's on the field.
It's on the field.
Got it.
And it's the perfect height, and it's the perfect distance away from the field. That's what enables the camera to work accurately, and it's driven by AI. So, you know, it zooms in where it's supposed to, and it's beautifully set up for football. But the beauty of it, too, is you can actually unplug it and manually operate it for the kids at Summit High School if they want to, you know, do the lessons and things like that. You can plug audio into it, and that's all another conversation about how to do that. Does that answer your question?
It does. I was, I was concerned that you were putting something into the existing fieldhouse, which is going to undergo some major changes.
Yeah, there are no major changes because it already has electricity, so we're basically putting in one wire and a camera that's about that big.
Thank you very much, Guy.
Okay. Councilmember Allen.
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. All I wanted to say was, this is a perfect example of public-private partnership and your perseverance. It's creative, it's forward-thinking, it's way overdue, and it was really interesting that you got ahead of brand-new technology. And exactly what councilmembers set up here is that it's not just sports. I mean, all the sports parents are going to get to benefit, but also any event, like the high school graduation, and so I think this really puts, again, Summit above, you know, in, in terms of forward-thinking. So I'm going to steal your, a little thunder and say, thank you, Mark, thank you, Erin, thank you, Rosemary, to make sure this gets done, and thank you, Delia, for having the foresight to get this on the schedule or the agenda, because otherwise, we would have missed out on an entire beginning of the season. So I think this is super exciting.
I will also just add my words of thanks for your generosity. Any other comments from members of council? Members of the public? Come on up. Careful.
John Meana, 103 Park Avenue Summit. One of my gripes to members of council over the past 15 years has been the lack of broadband service throughout the city. We are very, we have isolated areas that are not doing, not connected, and Verizon has refused to, to do it. In a city like Summit, as densely populated it is, it's quite ridiculous. And so one of the people who I had made that gripe to pointed out this resolution and noted that it included a call for Verizon to bring broadband to the stadium. And so I'm suggesting to the council that we need a broader call for, to Verizon to bring broadband to everyone in the city, so that people, you know, right now, we've been having, you know, the COVID, go with, people having to do some school at home, and there are certain spots in the city which you just don't have access to that, which is kind of ridiculous in this day and age. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make a quick comment through you, Council President. Just, your comment was very well received, and I like how you're thinking with that. So thank you.
Okay. Comments, members of council? Members of the public?
I'm still Guy Hazelman on Ruthven Place. Yeah, you stole my thunder. I mean, I feel like, you know, I want to start like it's Oscar night, but I didn't win the Oscar. The Summit, you know, community won the Oscar, and I do want to make a bunch of thank yous. But you guys all said some nice words about me, but this is truly a community effort, and if everybody wasn't on the same page, it would not have happened. It really wouldn't have. So it might have been my peer's perseverance and getting everybody on board and aware of it, and, and so I thank you for that. And so just let me start with a few thank yous, and then I want to tell you kind of how it happened, and then so we can say, this is the very best of public-private partnership. You should all be commended. You know, I've been at heated council meetings, you, you get elected to make hard decisions. You don't get paid for it. You're volunteers. You're not usually going to make everybody happy when you make them. Somebody's usually on the other side. Here's one where I agree. This is a win-win for the town, and, you know, what I hope to do is sort of remove certain obstacles in order to kind of get it done, but if I didn't have everybody's support, you know, in trying to do that, it never would have been done for this season, which was really kind of my own personal goal. Let's, you know, why, why wait? And so a few thank yous to start, and it's got to be Rosemary Lickertis. I mean, and the reason people are clapping is because you are what makes this town one of the greatest in, in the United States, I always say. The volunteerism and some of the people who give their heart and soul to the community, you've been here for, I won't say how long, a long time, and you make it operate. And when I'm trying to navigate the city, and there are a lot of people who had to get involved to make this happen, you know how to do that. And it's about making sure everyone knows which committees it has to go to, how quickly can it get there, and then it's got to come back to say. So you, you never get enough credit because you're, you know, but I really commend you. The other, yeah, really.
I'm sorry. If there are not enough, there's not enough.
It's never enough. And Mark Ozerowski, I mean, he's been here for, he told me, I can't even believe it, 25 years, but another-
No way. He looks like he's 16.
I know he looks like he's a teenager. It's unbelievable. But truly, another great somebody, I mean, the amount of work that the Department of Community Programs does is just, it's just shocking what they really do. But, you know, I won't even get to, you know, all the fields and the, and the pool and the municipal golf course and all the camps and programs. Mark, you do a great job, but when I went to him, he is just always responsive. He always talks about it. He, you know, he didn't see any downside. He immediately put it on the agenda. And then that leads me to the two council people, you know, council person, Hamlet and council, councilman, you know, Minigar, who, you know, talked about it, recognized it, again, didn't see a lot of downside for anybody, and moved it very quickly and unanimously then were able to get it on your agenda. And if it didn't get on the agenda again tonight, would not have happened. And so what are we talking about, too, in terms of, oh, and then the, the initial conversation, when it was just an idea, came with Councilwoman Allen, who, you know, it didn't start as her being a councilwoman, but her son plays football. So I'm like, hey, you know, let me run this by you. What do you think of this? She liked it. And then all of a sudden, it got into you wearing your councilwoman hat, saying, all right, here's who's on the subcommittees. And I called, you know, I called Mayor Glatt, I called the old county administrator, Kevin, Chris Cotter, and I said, how do you navigate this place? And Chris said something interesting. He said, I always look at what can go wrong and what the obstacles are. And he said to me, I don't see any. This is a win-win for everybody, and it really is. Now, what are we talking about? Well, and I'm going to tell about an obstacle that, that you guys, I think, should address at some point. I'm almost done. I know I'm taking up way too much time, but um-
It's hard to cut you off when you're being so nice.
Good. But there's, there was a lot of different, you know, streaming services and cameras that could have been put in there, and we kind of got rid of a lot of them. A lot of high schools have something called Pixel Lot, which has an exclusive with NFHS Network, which means that the county then has to sign a five-year agreement where they get to stream everything, and then people have to pay $79.99 a month for that. We don't want another streaming service. Doing it the way we're doing it by having, you know, some of the booster clubs and others fund the costs of this is the way to do it. So now grandpa and grandma, you know, my sons, you know, grandparents can, can watch it if they can't physically get to the game, and do it without a cost.
Oh, Phyllis will be there.
Yeah. And we're also a Huddle school. What happens is Huddle just whipped out on July 1st, brand-new technology, where everything's going to get streamed, it can go through YouTube if we want, but it's going to go on the Huddle TV. But the important program is this is not just about football, and this is the point I wanted to make, which is every single sports program at Summit High School will be on the Summit page. Their roster, their schedules, all the games, anything that was filmed, the kids have a highlight film, it can all be housed on a Huddle page. This is kind of state-of-the-art stuff, and most of the things that, that other schools don't have. And so we talked to Dan Healy, we talked to Kevin Costas, we all had a Zoom call with Huddle. Now, here's the one obstacle, and that'll be done.
I'll ask you to just wrap, wrap it up a little bit.
I'm wrapping it up. This is the problem that, that made it difficult to do, and that is that Tatlock Field is owned, as you know, by the city, and it's the high school and the Board of Ed that plays a lot of games at Tatlock. So what I find is Summit High School is, you know, doesn't want to make decisions when it deals with Tatlock because it's, because it's the city property, and the city sometimes is like, well, we don't want to do things unless we have the school on board, and it creates a little bit of, of a, of a challenge at times, it gets a lot of people involved. So I, I don't have a solution as to, but that became a big obstacle in how to get another, you know, 15 people involved, because, you know, they always want to say, oh, it's their decision, not mine. So I just thought I'd mention that. Thank you all very much.
All right.
Council President, is there a website? I just want to, is there a website for people to go to to see the 12th Man organization?
We, we literally, so the 12th Man is a 501(c)(3) that we set up that's going to be a fundraiser to try to kind of give back to these programs. We don't have a website yet, but we are going to aggressively look to the community to actually donate to help us offset some of these costs.
Guy, can I ask you? I think it's fabulous. I'm very, very pleased about this. Do you have any idea of other organizations that help musicians in our community?
Help mu-
Musicians, and have their information be, you know, what they're, they show, their, their performances, I mean, it's, it's, we're watching performances and, and, you know, ideas and stuff from the athletes. Do we have something that, that, do you know if this organization has a way to showcase our musicians as well?
Given the extent, you mean, the Huddle Summit High School website that we're going to put that as sports teams? Ah, no, I'm sorry, yeah. It's a great idea, and since we have that, I don't, I don't know why we actually couldn't put a whole fine arts section, because literally, all we have to do is add the names of band members or plays.
Because we have amazing, we have artists and musicians and debate scholars.
I didn't think of it. It's a great idea. I will talk to the Huddle people.
Maybe that's something I could do when I'm not mayor anymore. You can talk about it.
Great. No, but I don't know why we could, because we're almost custom-designing our own page, so I don't know why we couldn't do it, but I don't want to promise something I can't deliver. I'll look into that. That's a great idea.
Understood. But let's look, I would love it if you would look into it. Thank you.
It's a great idea. I mean, given the fine arts programs that we have that are amazing, it makes a lot of sense.
All right. Well, I think we should vote on it. All right. Excellent. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Okay. On to this, that was the first one. Okay. On to the second one, Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution 10534.
Isn't that the one we did?
Did we?
You did it.
Nope. No, we didn't.
No.
10537.
Oh, no, no, the-
Yeah.
This resolution is 10534.
Oh, I apologize. Okay.
Back on track.
Sorry. This is resolution 10534, which will, this is the grant application for the 2023 Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund. This is sponsored by Union County Board of Commissioners. The Kids Recreation Trust Fund provides funding to expand recreational opportunities for all children and residents in Union County. The Union County Board of County Commissioners is allocating up to $1 million in matching grand dollars for the creation, enhancement, and/or replacement of recreational facilities in Union County municipalities. This grant requires a one-to-one match and a letter of financial commitment stating the availability of matching funds. The city, the City of Summit Department of Community Programs is applying for funding through the Union County Kids Trust Program to rehabilitate the basketball courts at Mayby Playground. I know everybody's going to be super excited about that. The project is part of a larger initiative to rehabilitate the Mayby Playground, specifically the two basketball courts that have not had any work done on them in approximately 25 years. The total estimated project cost for the basketball courts and the fencing is $98,970. So we are requesting, the DCP is requesting $49,485 from the 2023 Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund to support this project. And for those of you who may not have been updated on the Mayby Playground, so this is funding that will be in addition to supplement our Mayby Playground renovation, so hopefully we might be able to get started on the basketball courts if we get this funding approved, and so we're looking forward to that, and I would like to move to adopt this resolution.
Any second.
Excellent. All right. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. We have one from Safety and Health.
Thank you, Council President. It's resolution 10586, and it's, this resolution authorizes the purchase of, from three state contracts for the fire headquarters furniture in the amount of $147,000, no, $147,948.43. And this is, this resolution is being voted upon now because these items are coming off state contracts, and some of them may no longer be available under the contracts, and others may, the prices may go up. So if we waited until September, we may, we might find ourselves having to spend more money on these items. And just to note, some of the furniture for the fire headquarters is being funded by donations, but some of these items are in the capital budget, and so for that reason, it makes sense to go ahead and do these now. So I move this resolution.
Okay. And I will second that. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. We are on to the consent agenda portion of the evening. We will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that, members of council? Nope? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We're on to public comments. We're on to public comments. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes comments from any member of the public about issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. If you have prepared remarks, please provide a copy to the city clerk. Also, a reminder, please, about three minutes, questions, please provide questions upfront. We're not likely to be able to answer all questions tonight, so we will follow up. And then please have a seat back down. Okay. Mr. Bennett.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Rades, Council President, members of common council. I'm Jim Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T, 38 Fairview Avenue, and I begin tonight with an update of my remarks from the last meeting about debt amortization. I spoke with Silvio Esposito, the Treasurer of the Hanover Township, and Mr. Esposito confirmed that Hanover Township has been debt-free for about 20 years. He could not comment about what led to that decision to become debt-free because that happened before his time. He talked about adding $100,000 here and there to a cigar box, perhaps he should have said piggy bank, but cigar box is what he said, to pre-fund capital expenses, so that when a need arises for an infrastructure project or a dump truck, the township takes money out of the cigar box. The cigar box is actually a cash account at a bank that is currently paying about 3%. In the meantime, we did get some publicity from a Union County newspaper called The Local Source, and Attorney Frank Capice, who's a contributor from, to that paper, wrote a supportive opinion piece. Now, my other comment is that I would like to note with satisfaction, Council President Vartan's announcement of the intent to repeal ordinance 19-3188, which is the number of it, the, and it's titled "The Broad Street West Redevelopment Plan Dated March 20, 2019", in accordance with the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 40A:28-7. So that's the ordinance that's proposed to be repealed, and that I've indicated that I've noted with great satisfaction. Council will need to confer with Planning and Zoning Council on paragraph three of that ordinance, which reads, and I quote, "The Broad Street West Redevelopment Plan shall supersede the existing zoning, and the official zoning map is hereby amended to reflect the zoning set forth in the plan." So that's the language that's in there. And the peril to repealing that ordinance would be that repealing the redevelopment plan for zoning for sub-districts 1 through 4 would leave those districts without replacement zoning. So I would urge discussion, discussion with zoning and planning council about additional language stating in effect that zoning and the official zoning map that existed immediately prior to the adoption of this ordinance, 19-3188 pertaining to the areas covered by Broad Street West Redevelopment Plan be reinstated, expresses verbus. The language would provide safeguards that those areas do not become unzoned. Previously, the previously existing business zone, I understand from Deborah Oliver, is flexible, allowing retail on the ground floor with two floors of residential use above. So this is what would come into effect if the previous zoning were to be reinstated. It would be limited to three stories height and allow for a low-floor area ratio of 75%, and it would also require the RSIS parking standard for housing, which would be limited to, I understand, which would be, require a minimum of two parking spaces per residential unit. And I'd like to thank Deborah Oliver for this information. And with that, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Gordon Stewart, 54 Evergreen Road, and Summit, obviously. So I'm coming back, as I did, like, in November, I came and talked about the parking, sorry, not the parking, the traffic light situation on Morris Ave at the intersections of Springfield and at Kent Place Boulevard. I followed up with Mr. Schreger on this, and I think there was a number of council members were copied on this, and I got a response today that really I find not going to meet the, basically what I was talking about in the first place, which is when you are a pedestrian in off-hours, off-hours, not during the day, the crossing, those crossings are very, very long. You have to wait there a great period of time, even if there's not a single car anywhere in sight, you have to stand there and wait unless you want to take the risk of getting run over. This could easily be remedied if, like, smart traffic light were put into operation, such as when a pedestrian comes, they press the button, and the sensors scan and say, hey, there's no cars coming, let's just change the lights now for the pedestrian. Because right now, you have to wait a great deal of time, which, and I understand, like, these are busy roads, but sometimes, believe it or not, they're not busy roads. There's no cars anywhere in sight. And the technology exists, but it hasn't been implemented by the county. The response I got from Mr. Schreger, I thought last year was that this was going to be looked at at the beginning of the year, and today's response said that there was going to be a Morris Avenue traffic study done in September after school resumes, which, you know, for during-the-day type situations, that makes sense. But I've never heard of a traffic study where someone's there with a clipboard at 10 o'clock at night, like, looking at seeing what the, the traffic and the pedestrian situation is then. They don't do that. They do it during the day, they do it during rush hours, they're not there on weekends, no one's going to be there at 10 o'clock on a Wednesday night, nobody's going to be there at 9:30 on a Sunday, because that's the traffic that needs measured, not the type of stuff that's going to be done in the traffic study for the corridor. And, you know, I brought this November, last November, and not much seems to have really happened as far as I can tell. And I think Mr. Schreger also commented that the, they checked the equipment and it wasn't defective, which, you know, I understand. I mean, it's not defective, I'm sure it isn't, but that's really not the issue. I don't see this as a Morris Avenue corridor situation. This is something that needs to be looked at offline. If this, if the county comes in and looks at this, they're not going to be looking at the times, they're not going to be addressing what I'm talking about, and even if the city has provided comments, there are going to be comments from all sorts of people and this kind of stuff, because it involves pedestrians, is not going to be looked at, because all the county cares about is the traffic. They don't care about pedestrians. And, you know, they don't care about Morris Avenue safety either, because like down opposite Douglas Volkswagen, they, they allow parking and obstruction of the view. You can't turn out of gates either way, and right or left, without putting your life at risk, because they allow big vehicles parking there, blocking and completely obstructing the view. So, you know, hopefully somebody can do something about this, because I kind of don't have a lot of confidence at this point that this matter will be addressed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Greg. I didn't catch his name, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Gordon Stewart, 54 Evergreen.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I just say, I understand your concern, Mr. Stewart. And Mr. Schreger works hard with the community.
Sure.
And the county. When I was first mayor, I really didn't think much of the county, honestly. In the eight years I've been here, I've come to understand that they work hard, they try. So I think to say that the county, the county, whoever that is.
Yeah.
Don't care about the pedestrians and the people, I don't think that's right.
Okay. I may be overstating the situation.
I'm just saying, we can agree to disagree.
So I think we're, we're going to have to follow this up with a couple of-
I'm just saying.
With a couple of different people, and I think it's probably best to take it offline and not do it in this format, right?
Just as one comment, I just say, I appreciate what you're saying, because there's a woman who, and I think you and I have talked about it, I might have sent an email, there's a woman who's blind, and she has to wait, even at any time of day, she has to wait for the light to turn over several times. And what I find is, when you're waiting, so the light is green, right? And you're not getting the pedestrian walkway?
Yep.
I would tend to walk, because I'll be like, I'm going with traffic, but because the pedestrian sign is red, people will turn into you, the cars that turn, even though you're walking with the traffic, cars will turn into you and yell at the pedestrians for crossing because the pedestrian sign hasn't changed. So I share your concern, and I think Mr. Schreger is on it. I know that it's kind of one of this bigger plan, but I don't know if there is a way that we can look at it, or if it has to be. Because it is such a busy road, can, more, I don't know about Kent Place, well, Kent Place too, but Morris Avenue and Springfield, I don't know, I know that you're, you're looking at it, but if we could do something to sort of expedite that particular corner.
Yeah.
But I guess they all have priority.
So I'll ask two things. One, Mr. Stewart, if you could have a seat, and we'll have Jamie, I think, wanted to say something, and then Aaron, if you want to weigh in.
Sure.
Ready?
If I might reiterate, one thing, I'm only concerned about off-hours, weekends and evenings. So, you know, bear that in mind. Thank you.
Just very quickly, just for the benefit of the public, there's a two-hour, two-mile stretch on Morris Avenue with 13 traffic signals that haven't been upgraded in 20 years. So we all agree and recognize that it needs to be addressed. When I, when I last spoke with Director Schreger about it, I think it was late June, I think we had some RFPs out that were going to be awarded any minute, which was the first step to perform this study, after which we had some leftover capital budget money, I think, from 2022, that was earmarked for this project in particular. So this is very much a priority, and we agree with you. And it's, it's, it's happening, and maybe, I just wanted the public to hear that.
You want to add anything, or?
Yeah, certainly through you, Council President. First, on county roads, the county will pay for install and then replace traffic signals, but the city actually owns them and maintains them. However, we still need permission from the county to make any changes. We do, we did receive our report back earlier this year, where the signals are just evaluated each year, and to no surprise, to upgrade the city's entire traffic signal inventory, I'm looking at needing between $1 million and $2 million at a time, but that's not being just given out like candy at Halloween. So we are trying to do what we can with what we have, but however, making alterations to some of the signals on Morris Avenue now, when we're about to take a holistic approach at all 13 of them, is not some, is something I would love to do, but I don't also want to spend $10,000 to upgrade a control panel, or even to pay the engineer or consultant fees to do it, when that report might say we have to do something totally opposite, because right now, the biggest complaint we get is I can't get up Morris Avenue within an hour because it just takes forever with all the signals, and we're trying to, to change that. So absolutely, all of these issues that I've raised are not ignored, they're all documented, they've all been brought into our reports that will follow up on, and we do want to look at them. And we will get that study underway, that, that will check the control systems of the signals and the timing of all the lights, and it is all tied together. But I certainly can, can appreciate the frustration. I, more than anyone, want to help the pedestrian safety in this town, so we are just chipping away at what we can, and we should see a lot of progress coming up.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Rachel Kramer, 88 Elm Street. I'm going to talk about, a little bit about pedestrian safety too. Thank you for your presentation, Chief Zagorski. I noticed that there was not any updates on traffic stops and traffic summonses. Do you, are you able to talk about that, about those updates? Are you able to talk about those numbers? Because numbers that were shared with me show a significant decrease in the number of summonses written pre-pandemic to now. I'm pedestrian, I walk a lot, I run a lot, I have small kids, I think everybody's worried about pedestrian safety, kids on bikes. And I saw a letter in tap about potentially lowering the speed limit in the downtown business district to 20 miles an hour. Is that possible? And what is SPD doing to increase pedestrian safety through not education, not engineering, but enforcement?
So I think-
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Chief, if you want, I'll ask you to have a seat.
Yep.
Chief, do you want to answer any of those questions now, or do you want to follow up separately?
I will follow up separately. I just wanted to say briefly, as far as the enforcement with the pedestrian safety, that has been lacking, a lot of our attention, as you saw, was, or has been directed at the stolen cars and the burglaries in residential areas. Most of our motor vehicle stops are not, lately, have not been for, as much for pedestrian, pedestrian safety, but more for the, I would say, in the crime prevention or crime detection of vehicles in and around the areas where we've been having the crimes. So she's not wrong, you know, we, we continue to do pedestrian safety, but not at the, at the level that we, we would like to right now.
Okay. Thank you.
So we can follow up, Chief, with some other details, and we can reach out to Mrs. Kramer.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments?
Tara Gagliano, Six Ashwell Court, in Summit, obviously. So last month I was here, and we talked about having a meeting to address the issues that I'm not going to talk about, because we all know what they are.